We'd like to call the work session to order. We have one thing to review, which is our 2022 draft budget for the general fund. And Giovanna is here. And absent is Jimmy Wilson and our attorney.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to go over one of our biggest budgets. And what I've done is I tried to make it a little more interesting because a lot of the departments don't change a whole lot because a lot of them are wages, fringe benefits, maybe some office supplies. But kind of wanted to give you just some visuals. And we're going to start with the pie chart of our revenues. So the categories in the revenue. And you can see that our biggest revenue that we receive in our general fund is our state share revenue at the $5,472,062. And then, of course, our property taxes would be second. And then we have rent and royalty. It's kind of a strange name, but we do have rent that we get from Yucca for property. And we also receive royalties from Michigan Bell and Comcast. And it's by people who use those services, correct?
Yeah, each bill has a... Each of your Comcast bill, and I think it was AATAs, whatever communication...
It's Michigan Bell, which is ATT, AT&amp;T, but it's Michigan. Anyway, we got our checks from Michigan Bell and Comcast.
I think a 1.2% amount on everyone's bill that was negotiated before we came here. And that revenue is paid, like a surcharge, I guess.
Yeah. And so that's what... And the next one would be the administrative fee that we receive from taxes. That's at $790,000 budgeted. You can only use that for Treasury and the Assessing Department. So you can't exceed that. And our expenditures for that, and we'll see on the next page, they're $950,000, I think, for both of those. So we're well within the range over the... The expenditures are well over the revenues for that. All right. If you would like to, we can turn in our budget book and go over each line of revenue, starting on page one of the budget book. I don't... I didn't copy each page in the presentation. No, it's the actual budget. So we'll be on the revenues for a minute. And we do have... So for each one of our lines, over on the, I guess it would be the left-hand column, there's the account number. But there's an asterisk. Where you see the asterisk, that means there's a narrative. And the narratives follow, you know, after the line items. Oh, it was over there. All right. So does anyone have any questions? I did go over how we arrive at property taxes. I did go over the state share revenue at the beginning of September. Does anyone have any questions looking over any of the information here that you would like me to touch on? Yes, Trustee Newman?
Yes, two things. Can I... Please. All right. Two things. One, I appreciate the explanation being on the same page. And two, I do apologize for not right giving you my questions in advance. I stayed up late last night and I just...
It's all right.
All right. I had pretty much answered the first one. Okay. What were the... I was looking at state revenue sharing. In looking at trying to backtrack, trying to get the installment amounts for October and December of 2021, to get to... Because I didn't know if there were four for this year and the two from last year to go toward the '21 actuals or...
Okay. So the state, when the state does theirs, they run from October 1st through September 30th.
Right.
So it's a little difficult to look at them. So when they say a budget for '21, it's actually '21 and part of '20.
Yeah, right. Last three months of '20.
Well, two. There's two payments because it's six payments.
Right.
You know, it's bimonthly. So there's two payments, the one in October and the one in December that we can't tell. So on the budget for '22, I do not have October and Decembers.
Okay.
So what I do is I assume the October and December of the '21 to come up with my number.
So you used... You said '21 or you mean '20?
It's 2021 and '21, '22.
Okay, yep.
So I can get '22. What they say is '22, but it does not have... It doesn't have November, I mean, the October and the December payments in there. So what I do to assume what I'm getting here is I assume the October and December of the prior year.
Okay. Which would be this year?
'21, yes.
Okay. All right. And so that answers two of my questions. Because I...
I can bring all the... I went over that in September. I can bring all that back. I just didn't, you know, I didn't bring it each time. I didn't know if you wanted me to go over it again. It is a big, big part of the general fund. So maybe I should have brought it for you again to just kind of go over it. But it's a little difficult to try to pull the information from. And actually, when I was preparing the budget, I used a printout from May. They had updated it on August 25th, which I'd already had my numbers already in. So, but it does change. It's a moving thing. It's not final until it is final.
All right. It's fluid. Okay.
Right. So the one, our payment actually in August that we just received went up. And I want to say maybe like $180,000. It was higher than what anticipated.
Does the state send you what the amounts are going to be for...
They send it... Well, we have the estimated amounts, but we don't know the amounts until we get the payment.
Right. Okay.
That's because sales tax is part of the state shared revenue payment.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it just depends on what's going on with the economy a lot of times.
That is true.
Also, in the state revenue sharing, I kind of got confused on the last two lines. It says, well, not just maybe the last line. It says, "The budget makes an assumption that the installments for October and December stay the same as projected for the 2021 amounts." This is a 2%, 2.6% decrease from the 2021 total projected amount of $5,617.
Yes.
How did you compute that? Or do you have anywhere where I can go to see the support or...
Yeah, so everything is on the state website.
Ah, the state website.
The state website. You can go get your revenue sharing information right there. I can send you the links for that. It's kind of hard to find. You've got to go to the local. So you go to the Treasury and then to the local government. And then under that, it'll be a revenue sharing. And then you go for estimates. And then you can look for '21. You can look for '22.
Right.
And so we have to kind of put them together. There's also another form that they have that they show a linear amount instead of a chart. So they have a chart and then they have a linear report. So you use all the reports and that's pretty much what it is. But yeah, the amount for '22 is less than what we had for the year before.
Okay. All right.
So whether we're catching up from COVID, you know, the catch... Actually, on that one form, it does have how they calculate. And they calculate by our population.
Oh, on the state website?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll give you the actual information that you need to do the calculations. I'll send you the link for that.
All right.
And I'll just kind of put it out for everyone. I'll send the board.
Okay.
So you can take a look.
All right. Okay, thank you. I have a few more questions as we go on, you know, different parts.
Okay. Is there any on the revenue?
No, I think you've answered it all because I... I had a question about the fund balance, but I was able to find it through that, through the book the accounting firm gave for the year their, I guess, comprehensive annual financial...
Our financial statements.
Yeah.
Yes, so that has 2020s. You'll see in here, I do have a nice sheet for you because you had asked for it last time.
Okay.
So we do have a sheet in there for all of you to take a look at where the fund balances are. And you've got to remember, well, I'll talk about that when we get to that.
Yeah.
Because they're an estimated budget. They're budget and not actuals. It's a little different.
Okay. All right. And yeah, I'm... I have on the different revenue sections, I kind of wrote the different questions down. But for this, for this part...
For the general fund?
For the... Yeah, for the general fund. Because that was... That was many different business units in the general fund. So I, you know, instead of write it all down on one page, which I should have done, I kind of wrote it on each section and have a fold-up, you know, a fold-up so that I can hit where it is. But you can answer questions from anybody else if they have some.
All right. And maybe I'll just real quickly go over the administration fees.
Okay.
They're toward the bottom of the page. There's a big section. It starts with the ending numbers at 626. There's calculations that we use for those. And each of the funds pay the general fund back for the services that we provide for them. So we provide HR, we provide accounting, there's auditing, there's legal, there's maintenance. So each one of these funds will pay a certain amount. And we take, we do it by salaries. So we take salaries and a percentage of those salaries and their fringes. And that's kind of how we come up with a number, by the number of people that they have in those departments. So there's a big calculation sheet that I use. I just want to kind of let you know that we do that every year. I update that every year. Any questions on that?
You mentioned last time that the health insurance would not take place. And that was, that was in the book at 20% for all the different... So that is... Do you know how much of a savings that would be?
That... I did put the new numbers in and I meant to write it down. I think it was like for the general fund, I think there was a savings of $180,000.
Okay.
But I don't, please don't quote me on that.
Right.
You know, it was a substantial amount. So it was between 180 and 200. And my suggestion would be, you know, for those amounts, because it's unprecedented that we get such a decrease. I have not seen one. I mean, we did get the previous year, we got .5, which that didn't shock me. I mean, sometimes you get those. But most time you do get the larger increases. However, you know, when you get a 4.96 decrease, you know, that amount you might want to take and put it toward some of the liabilities that you have for OPEB retirement or pension or, you know, because that would be funds that you didn't really know that you were going to have access to. And you know, with COVID, I think where we just didn't have the experience that we normally have, people weren't going to have surgeries or even going to the doctors.
Right.
You know, which is a shame, you know, because people probably didn't need those things. But it was good for us at the time. But I wouldn't expect that when things start to kick off. I don't know what's going to happen. It kind of makes me a little leery of next year, what our increase will be. I don't think we'll have another decrease.
No, you didn't have... The budget wasn't prepared with any raises or contractual negotiations.
That is correct.
Do you anticipate, in the event that it's anticipated, that contracts are negotiated? I was looking at that savings. Could that have been, be applied toward that or depending?
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Okay.
So, but I don't, I don't do those until, you know, the contracts are negotiated and finished. In fact, next meeting, I do have the increases that the board approved for '21.
Okay.
I do need to do a budget amendment for that because we did not budget that. So I'll bring that back. It's like six pages, so.
Yeah.
I kind of put that off as long as I could. But that one will be... So I don't do the changes until the contracts have been negotiated and approved.
No questions since John's talking about that. So if there is a saving of 100, 100 or so...
180, about that.
$180,000. I'm assuming it was staying in general fund. Is that correct?
That does. That is just a general fund. And you have to remember, when I say savings, I had budgeted 20 and our actual... So when I redid the calculations, it's a decrease of almost 25% because it's the 20 then less the 4. So I say 180, but that's probably not, it's probably not that much. You know, when you think, if I pulled the 20 away, it probably would be a little bit less, but...
Well, that's great for the township. You never know when we get one.
Yes, yeah, you just, you don't.
Thank you.
So by the time we have, we got the new number in September for our healthcare. And that's when we learned the number. So we have to do a draft budget just to put numbers in, you know. And we're conservative. So she, we budget 20% because we never know. I mean, you literally never know. But then, so as we get closer and have the public hearing, we'll have better numbers, you know, in expenditures and in projections as well. September's when we get them and... Or August, was it August? Into August, September.
No, we do have the number. And I do have them in. I just didn't have it in time. I didn't do the...
No, but they're not in this.
They're not in this.
Because this is a draft.
Right. And I do have them ready for next time, you know, we can, we can put them in. I do, I did update them. I just didn't have it in time for this meeting.
Well, you can't update it on one thing and that...
Correct.
As more information comes in, we always make the changes and...
Any other questions on the revenues? Okay. Lisa, can you go back to the presentation for me? Okay, we'll go into the appropriations. You can go to the, to this slide. Ooh.
Giovanna, you do have in revenues that we're budgeting $457,000, right? For fund balance to operate in general fund?
Yes.
I mean...
Yes.
It's not normally there.
Yeah, normally we do not need that much of a...
That's the largest amount of fund balance to operate. We've had to use. And that's even, so hopefully that'll go down with all the other healthcare and stuff. Did you get that, John?
No. Can you say that again?
What we're doing is we're taking from fund balance to operate. And that is not something we normally do. And so it's a very large amount. We'll do budget amendments during the year for capital projects or things that's brought forward from the different departments and the board. But that's just a large amount to budget from fund balance to operate.
Right.
Yes.
Because the normal...
That is not normal. I mean, it's...
No, and you'll see when we get to the last department, which is the other financing, that's where we have to give other funds money so that they can operate, you'll see that we have over $750,000 that we need to give to the court, 14B District Court, so that they can operate. So that's a huge chunk. That's a...
But from the overall picture, it's not as bad as if they seem if the fund balance wasn't there.
Correct.
That's why we have it. Like we always try... Because we would have never anticipated our court to require that much from fund balance. We're at $500,000 some thousand already this year, right?
And I probably will need another budget amendment before the year's end for them. They're just not picking up on their revenue.
And it's because of COVID? There's a lot of reasons, you know?
Yeah. It's not, it's very unusual.
Very.
They usually can kind of sustain themselves, but this last couple of years has just been very difficult.
Did we discuss at some point a different way they were going to do their revenue, the circuit court? Because I know a lot of it is what fines and tickets or... I just thought that, I thought I heard it mentioned, you know, earlier in previous meetings.
No. I mean, I haven't heard that.
Okay. All right.
But I know because of COVID, well, people are speeding is our number one issue.
Yeah.
And any neighborhood watch meeting, you, in every neighborhood watch meeting you go to, you know, in this court, when it was created, which was before me, that was the business model, was fines and costs.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how we do it.
Right.
That's...
Because I know I hear, I hear cars going up and down all the time, all hours of the night.
Yeah, and we, it's unsafe.
Yeah, it is.
For people in... So anyways, yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard that discussion here yet. I know that we're down officers. And because of COVID, they weren't, you know, doing speeding tickets because of that.
Yeah, okay.
It is a community safety issue and it's...
Yeah, it is.
Throughout the entire township.
It is.
Okay, Lisa, can you hold the one screen? Whoops. This one, right before it. Yes, thank you. All right. So what we're looking at here is the different departments that we have in the general fund. These are all the expenditures, the appropriations, and just the total in each of those departments. All right? And we do have those in here line by line. But I wanted to kind of show you this. This is what I actually made the pie chart from. But the pie chart gets a little messy when you have that many departments. So I just kind of wanted you to be able to, you know, be able to look and see which ones have the amounts in them. So Lisa, if you can go to the next one, the pie chart. And so here's the pie chart of the different departments and their appropriations. Our largest one is the other financing uses. Again, that's, that's the last one on my list. So that's the last one that we'll go over. So, you know, keep that in mind. We'll hit that one. Our computer support is very high. We need to, there's several things there. And again, I, we'll go over each one of those. We're going to hit each one of the departments. And then also, we have our community stabilization, which is where we, you know, make sure that we don't have nuisances and bad places. We take care of those things. We have attorney winners who can speak to that and what we're doing with those funds.
Giovanna, can you explain? So I see one section's Township Board, but then you have the supervisor, the treasurer, the treasurer and the clerk are all separate categories. So what does, what's the Township Board entail?
So the Township Board are the trustees. And then we have some memberships that we have for various activities throughout that would benefit the whole township. I know one of them is one of mine, which is a Munetrix that I use for the Citizens Guide. And so that we expense that in there. And the narrative actually will show you that. And we also have our profit comes out of there.
Yeah. We're talking about Township Board?
Yes, the Township Board.
Okay. We have the salaries of the four trustees, their FICA, office supplies, professional services for the lobbyists, which is GCSI, and other professional organizations that we're members of, as well as membership and dues. So the total is 14478.
And that's on page seven in your budget book.
It's actually less than it... It's less than it was last year.
Just a little bit, yes.
Am I reading that right? But we don't have any increases for employees or elected officials in here.
Any questions on, on the Township Board? The 101 department. The next department is the supervisors. That's on page eight of your budget book. Again, there's not very much in there that has changed. As I said earlier in September, the OPEB for the retiree OPEB, not retiree OPEB, but the OPEB for when active employees retire, put that way, used to be in one section out of the general fund. When we had to go to this, the state has us go to the new chart of accounts. They want us to allocate those expenses out to each department. So this is the first year that we have that allocated out. And that's for each person who was hired before January 1st of 2014. That cost per person was $16,011. So those expenses, so you'll see that's probably what the big difference is. And this one right here is just where that expense was. Yes, Trustee Newman?
Just a minor question. For the salary supervision, it seems to have increased from the '21 original budget to the requested budget from 62,488 to 64,050. And, but it says that there was, if there were no adjustments...
What page?
It's, we're on page eight.
Oh.
That is for '21's adjustment, that we approved '21 salary increase. So in 2021, the budget had no increase.
Right, okay.
So they had an increase that you don't see yet even in the budget amendment because I haven't brought that forward.
Ah, okay.
It's been approved. And then for '22, we put that amount in from '21. So what you're seeing there is '21's numbers.
Okay. I remember that, too.
Okay.
Yep, okay. All right. Thank you.
Pretty straightforward. Nothing's really changed in this one. There's not... All right. Any questions on that one? We'll move on to our next fund, which is going to be my department, the accounting department. So on this one, my biggest difference on this one was the OPEB retirement healthcare that had to pay. I have three, including myself, three employees. And all of us were hired before 2014. So my expenditure, it just hit at $48,000, which I didn't have before. So that increased mine substantially. Other than that, I just have, you know, basic office supplies, some membership dues for Michigan governmental financial officers organization. Any questions on the accounting department? Okay, so we have the clerks department. You know, can I back up just, just a moment? Because I had, I had one of my presentations that's not in your, in your budget book. If you can go forward one. This is the, this is one of my work papers that I have for budgeted fund balance. So this has each one of the funds that we have. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, because we're only going over the general fund today. But if you'll look at the, the top line is your general fund, and how you read this over is the first column is the audited fund balance, the ending fund balance for general fund at 7,405,472. And the next column is the original budget that we had a need of, what we needed, either needed funds from appropriated from prior year fund balance or if we had an excess. So if, if we had, if our revenues were higher than our expenditures, that would be an excess. So you'll see those down that first column. The second column are any budget amendments that we've done throughout 21. And then what you do is just take those numbers, the 7,405,472, and subtract those second two columns or add them. I guess you could add because they're negative. Then you get to a budgeted ending fund balance. So this is the anticipated fund balance. If everything stays the way it's budgeted, we'll end the year with 6,467,420 for 21. Now, the amount that I have, the next column for 22 requested budget, this is a change. This is the change that we had, because if you'll look on your budget, what you needed for your appropriated prior year fund balance was the 457,229. After I did the change for the healthcare, because I tried to update, this is to be up, as updated as possible. So I only needed, instead of that 400,000, I only needed 213,214. And so my anticipated fund balance for 22, ending 22, is 6,254,206. So you can see it, it's going down. And then I just put the total appropriations for the whole fund for 22, and then the, the estimated fund balance percentage is at 62.9%. Usually, more than 30% of that is designated for projects that we have. And so is there any questions on how to read the chart?
Jovanna?
Yes.
The 62.9%, that would be a estimated fund balance at the end of 22?
22.
Alright, thanks.
Yes, and normally, like I said, because we do not budget for any of our capital improvement projects. So normally, about 30 to 35%, we usually have designated, not approved, because it's, it's not an approved thing, but designated for capital improvement projects. So, alright, so I'll go back to, to our budget book now. I'm sorry, Supervisor Stumpel?
The Parks, the Parks Fund has a 321% increase?
It's not an increase.
I mean, fund balance, but.
It's the percentage.
The fund is 28,000, the whole fund is 28,000.
Yeah.
So that's why it's 300, that large percentage, and then.
It skews it, yeah.
The building fund is another fund that is restricted, it cannot, like, that has to operate that fund in its separate, that's another larger percentage. Compost, I mean, there's a lot of single, single funds here that's all combined, right, Joe?
That's correct. The yellow ones, if you, if you notice the yellow, and, and why they are yellow is that they are actually enterprise funds, which means they're more like a business fund, and they have net position, so they have capital assets. And you'll see at the bottom portion of the graph, there is where I actually take out the capital assets, so that you can see what they actually have if you, if they were to have a fund balance. The part in the yellow would be their fund balance. But they have, they call it net position because they are an enterprise fund. So it really isn't fund balance, but, you know, for terminology that you would understand, this, the yellow would be if they had a fund balance, that's what it would be.
And the ARPA fund?
Yes, Trustee Swanson.
So I understand the golf and the compost being a enterprise. Can you explain the motor pool, like, why that would be?
The motor pool is because you actually, we buy the vehicles from motor pool, and each of the funds pay the motor pool back for those. So it, it's gathering money. It's, it's technically an internal account, it, but they label it as an inner, inner, you know, when you look on the financial statements, it's next to the enterprise funds. It's separate, it has its own little column, but it, it is with that, and because it does have assets. Yes.
But there are other vehicles that are.
That is correct. Yes, that has all the, the ones that the ordinance uses, the assessors uses, our computer department uses, building, you know, maintenance, all of our vehicles are there.
And they're charged to each department.
Yes, they pay back.
And so the revenue.
Just a comment. I do see the necessity for making sure the fund balance, you know, doesn't decrease as much as it did from this year to next year. Are there steps being taken, like, for instance, the 700,000 that had to go for the courts? I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's anticipated next year. I, I guess, are there measures to prevent decreases for the general fund or?
Well, we can't make more widgets.
Right.
So we, we, we have our, our revenue sharing, and we have our taxes, and those are all set amounts. So other than, you know, the court, you know, maybe the fines and fees, and the ordinance fines and fees, they'll start picking up as we go along. Like I said, that COVID has just affected how they operate and, and what they have coming in. I, you know, I don't even know, are they, are they open now? They, they are open, I, I don't even know. I know they didn't open, they may still not be open. But, you know, no, otherwise, there's, there's not a lot that I can do other than I would assume the worst. That's why we, we try to keep a healthy fund balance, because we never know what is going to happen. We, and we don't, we can't make money. That's, that's the drawback. So we, we try to be as conservative as we can and, you know, prepare for the worst and try to ride those out. And hopefully, you know, our, our taxes will increase, our property values will increase, you know, the revenue sharing will increase, you know, those are all things that we can always hope for.
And we also bring the capital improvement projects, like our roads. So we, our bond expires after 2022? Is their last payment?
That is correct.
So that's 600 and some thousand dollars every year that we pay for the bond for the roads. So that'll expire after 2022. Yeah, so, you know, well, you don't find, it's always moving, and we can't, it's nerve wracking sometimes to try to figure out what's going to drop. And maybe it's because we're traumatized by what happened between 2009 and 15, when we lost 30% of our taxable value. So the economy affects every, you know, COVID, yeah, it's just, never know.
Okay, so we are actually on the Township Clerk Department. That is on page 14 of your budget book. I do have in my presentation, there's just a couple noteworthy. Tried to get information that you might find interesting, you know, that I would point out that's different. And in this one, in this case, for the clerks department, the only thing that's different, other than the, the OPEB that I was, had already discussed, is that we have actually taken the election appropriations and put them in their own department now with the new chart of accounts. The state wanted us to have it in its own department. So we pulled all of those out, and they are in a new department that is 262. So, and we'll go over that one as we go down, and just kind of go in, in order. So, but as far as the, the clerks department, there's not, there's not anything that's really, that jumps out. They did pay for their big maintenance contract. Did you get the invoice in for that? Not yet, okay. We'll be paying in 21, we're supposed to pay the big maintenance contract of 75,456 for all of the, thanks, the tabulators. So that's gone away for, for 22. So does anybody have any questions on the clerks department?
I would like the clerk to go up front and answer some questions. I'm kidding, that was a joke.
I'll share. I'll share. I will. Okay, so the next department. The next department is, oh, let me get to it, it's on page 17. It's very small, it's our independent auditor, that's where we pay our auditor from. That didn't change. That did not change for 22. I think the amount for 21 is actually less than what I had budgeted for. She's not sent the bill in yet, she's finished, but we have not received her bill yet. We usually get that in November, so we haven't paid that yet. And then I have budgeted an extra $2,000 in case that I need to have some help. Like, I had to have some help with the ARPA, and she did some calculations for me. I, you know, I budgeted a little bit there so that she can come in and, you know, if I need, if I need some help. So you can do that. Any questions on that?
Just how many years is the contract for? I noticed it said this was the last year?
Yes, usually it's a five-year contract, so we'll, we'll have to get on that this year. That covers for, so she's good through 22. Our next department is the computer support. This is, you know, one of our bigger expenditure departments. Do we have? Yes, we do have Travis McDougall here, he's the manager of that department. If you have any specific questions, I think his narrative has a lot of information in it, and I have actually put, I just kind of copied the narratives up here, because I don't know what some of those terminologies are that we need. I know our system is, I feel is very secure. You know, we've had a lot of training, and we have to update. Travis, would you like to say a couple of things about it, or just wait for somebody to have any questions? Or does anybody want him to go over any of the narratives?
I have a quick question.
Yes, Treasurer Aldridge? Oh, yeah. Eldridge?
John, or Travis, on 977000. I just saw the equipment for last year was 94.5, and this year it's 92.5, but we spent less than 20,000, just with the variation there. In, in the previous years, we got close to meeting it, it looked like, but this year we haven't.
So, so far this year, we haven't done most of our hardware replacements? Because 977000 is hardware, correct? Yes.
That is correct.
Yeah, we haven't done the projects that were budgeted for this year. Some of them, we're going to carry over till next year, we're just not going to be able to get to them.
Is the new phone system in there for this year?
No, because that is an issue that's being discussed now, where this was done like two, couple of months ago.
Okay, what's that question? Well, Travis, and Madam Chair, so that has, I've seen your emails, you're having problems with the phones. So is that, you're saying it's not budgeted, it's not budgeted to get the new phone lines? You, you haven't discussed that this time, is that correct?
It hasn't been discussed at this time when we, because this is a recent issue that's kind of come up to light, where we really need to start doing the digging and possibly looking at replacing it. That's the recent conversation, which was done after this draft was submitted?
Submitted, so, well, my question is, I should start off with my question. Is there a window there as far as money, if you do need to replace those phones? I think it's so imperative that you can't call the township, and the phones are screwed up. I know shit, I mean, crap happens, God, you get me? Crap happens, but, you know, I've had this to happen in my line of work when I was junior president. Phones are so essential, and data is so essential. If you don't have data and backup, you have nothing. Okay, so I just wanted to know, is there, where would that budget come if you guys need that phone money? Or have you, all budgets are kind of set high, okay? Never do a real, you do an estimate of a budget, is my belief. So if there is some money still there, so you can take care of that problem if it happens? Or where would, where would that money come from, for the general fund, if that budget is so close knit? You see what I'm saying?
Yes, it would come from the general fund for the change. We have a 10-year contract, we're in the ninth year, or is this a 10th year?
It was a, I looked, it was a, for our phone system itself, was a 56-month contract, which expires the, in about two weeks. And I did talk to our current provider, and it's going to be converted to a month-to-month at the end of it, so there's no anticipation of our costs going up skyrocket, so we can start evaluating, do we want to continue with what we have? Or do we want to look for an alternative option? And then go out for, I guess, a capital outlay type project, where we'd all be brought back to the board, go, hey, we need this, if funding is available, where we can make it, you know, we'll present that. If not, we'll ask for funding for it.
And I just see that note where you said you were going to go month-to-month and try to analyze this situation. See, I can see where you go from there. Whether you keep them, or you get advanced phone systems.
Yeah, we'll know, we'll know, we're doing an analysis to try to figure out what it is. We, there's also another, people, a company that manages a phone systems. So when there is a issue, like our security on our computer systems, they manage it offsite.
Okay, I got all of that, but my question is, again, with his budget, is there any money?
Yeah, there's money in his equipment, line I.
You get some money somewhere to take care of this problem.
Yeah.
Is it from the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my question.
Based on looking at his.
His numbers.
Yeah. It's a priority, yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah, it's a priority.
Essential, yeah.
Yeah, because you're going to have so much backlash. If you call here, and you can't get no answers.
And the staff is very frustrated trying to answer, and the residents think that we can't hear them, which really, we can't hear them, but it's just jacked up.
Just want to make sure there's some money in that budget somewhere to fix the problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joy had one more. I forget, I forget who asked the question earlier about the motor pool, maybe John?
Trustee Swanson.
So as I was listening to the discussion, I looked down, and, and this may be a question for you rather than Travis, I don't know. His motor pool the last few years, and not that it's a big amount, I'm just trying to understand it better, has been 5,900 and some change, and all of a sudden, this year, it drops all the way to 7,67, $700.
For Travis?
Yeah, motor pool internal.
Okay, let me.
It's, I'm sorry, it's 943000. Again, I'm just trying to understand how, what the difference is, where it went from 5,900 and $25 all the way down to 7,67.
He paid for his vehicle.
Congratulations.
He paid for his vehicle, and then what, what you see there is just for normal maintenance. Oil changes, windshield wipers, tires.
Okay, so once a vehicle's paid off in any of the. Okay, so, once a vehicle's paid off in any of the different funds, it would drop like that?
Correct. And then, they would just pay a little bit in for the normal maintenance on the vehicle.
Okay.
Does that mean I get a new one?
No.
Thank you.
But at such point in time, he needed one in a conflict. He just had one on the on board.
Yes, so Travis would talk with, with Mike Hoffmeister and they would decide if they needed a new vehicle and then they would see if there was funds available in the motor pool and then they would come and ask to go out for bid like they did last week. So, yeah, we do replace them when they need. And then, they auction off the older ones that we are having an auction right now, so.
So, I guess I do have another one then, Jo. So, with his, the money in his motor pool section, that's just a generic township vehicle, not one assigned just to his department?
No, that one is designed to his. He has one assigned to him. He was sharing that with someone else for a while and then it, when he got Michael on board, it was decided that he needed one vehicle for himself. So, there is an escape that he's been using on his own. And then, we ended up getting, I think he shared with the Community Development Department and they just need, they needed a vehicle full-time and he needed one. So, we got one for each one of those departments now.
I have questions to talk about vehicles. I just wish that it had their, so all staff uses township vehicles. Is that for the liability purpose? That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
In, in looking at this, I see the professional services as well as computer software. Is this, two questions. How often is this done? Is this like an upgrade or maintenance or?
So, with professional services, there's two major projects in that budget. There's the finishing up for a new website that's going to be carried over till next year along with in Office 365 migration, which is being proposed. And this is a major project and there's two components to it and two costs to it. There's the professional services that is going to help us train our users, do the conversion, help manage the entire project. And then, there's the licensing costs that would be more likely professional or long-term. So, the, the, I have $65,000 for the licensing cost itself. That is a worst-case scenario type cost because it is a pay-per-user-per-month type project. And per-user costs are anywhere between $5 a month to $45 a month. So, yeah, it, that, when it does, it'll all get brought back to the board with more reasonable pricing, like, you know, this is really what we anticipate. This is what the consultant will most likely cost for us to do the migration and all this other stuff. The professional services will, of course, go out to bid. It will include the licensing cost itself. Before we do move forward, there'll have to be some internal discussions because this is a very large conversion. We have to, it would include migrating our entire mail system, our entire chat program, our entire authentication systems. I mean, it, it's a very large project, which is why we threw in the extra or the other $50,000, I think, or $60,000 for the professional service for somebody to help with that to make it go as smooth as possible. Did that answer the question or did I?
To explain, you know, the increase, I was just thinking, you know, if it was, I didn't know it was that in.
Turn your microphone on, please.
Sorry. I, I didn't know it was that involved. I just, you know, didn't know what it was, but I just, you know, wanted to know the extent of it. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for our Computer Support Department? Thank you, Travis. Okay, we are moving on to our Treasurer Department. Treasurer Eldridge, you can go right ahead. Ask all the questions right there. And, and again, I, there wasn't, I don't really have any noteworthy items on here. It's just the regular personnel, wages and fringe benefits. Purchasing dog license, that's about it. There's really not a lot of difference there.
The purchasing of a dog license in the Treasurer's Department?
Yes. That's where they, they're issued from there. So, they buy the license so that when the people come in, we have the license to give out. So, and we charge for those. So, you know, we get revenues back for the dog license. So, so that was, that's a very easy, that's a very easy one. If there's no questions, we'll, we'll move on. Okay, we are on page 25. This is Assessing Department. And I'm looking there. I don't really have any, I have nothing that really stands out. Unless you guys have any questions specifically for that department. The narrative lists out how many that we have in that department. And who we have. Any questions? Okay, let's move on. We have a lot to go through. All right, the next one is on page 28. That's our Election Department. And this is where we moved all of the expenditures from Clerk's Department to the Election Department. So, we just moved those out. The, and we anticipate two elections. I, I'm sorry, I didn't check with you, Clerk.
Yep, that's correct. And I'll just say and add, thank you. I do think it will be helpful to have this department separated out so that it's just better and easier for tracking. And of course, like, we've had one election since the absentee vote, you know, big absentee voting push happened. And so, if for any reason we needed to, we'd come back for a budget amendment if necessary. But, I think that we have a good, great budget. And thank you, Jo.
You're welcome. The only question I had, and I did put it in.
Yes.
In here is, is for the postage. We normally have the postage all in our general account, in our general fund. Just, we all use this postage. I didn't know if you would like to.
I would prefer that personally.
Okay, then, then I will make sure that I.
I think that we have that function on our little machine. I just don't know that it translates back because actually, it's one of the things that in the past, we've been able to get some costs reimbursed for that.
Yes.
And so, it would be very helpful to our department to also have that.
Great, then I'll get with you, I'll get with you and get a number from you and we'll just.
It will be a total guess, Jo, but, yeah, we'll do it.
We'll make our best estimate and we'll move it from the general 267 into.
Perfect.
This one will.
Thank you.
Move the budget number over so that you have it to track. I thought that might be helpful. Any questions? Okay, we're going to go to our Residential Services Building Operations Department. I do have on this one, we had budgeted in the 705 number, the original number we had budgeted, I'm sorry, did I, it's page 30. And 705, when I say 705, I'm looking at the, the back numbers, the back six numbers. And we did have the Building Operations Director position there that was not filled in '21. And it has been requested to implement a Residential Services Department Assistant Director. So, that's being brought forward for you and we would take 50% of the salary and put it to the Residential Services Building Operations and 50% of it and put it in the RSD Administrative Department at number 752. So, that's kind of the only difference that, that I'm seeing in this one. So, I don't know what you, if you'd like any discussion on that or?
Are you under President's orders?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
That's why I go that way. So, had you hired, I just read it, had you questioned it to me, a Residential Services Department Assistant? Didn't you hire that person yet or not?
No, that's being brought toward the board right now.
Okay.
This is, this would be brand-new for '22.
That's, yeah, that's.
Mike Hoffmeister?
Mike Hoffmeister, Residential Services Director. That is correct. This is a newly proposed position. Previously, we had a Building Superintendent who retired in July of 2020, I think. It's been July of 2020. And that position has been vacant since then. We did post the position at one point and had an offer on the table and the person declined. So, we took a step back and reevaluated our operation and decided that the best process would be to hire an Assistant Director for the RSD Department to help me with day-to-day operations, smaller capital projects, sidewalks, a lot of, lots of those items.
So, you're saying within the township, someone that is there already? Is that what you're saying?
Repeat the question?
It says, so you're saying from the RSD Department, someone that is internal?
Not necessarily. It would be, it would be a posting as we would require through our HR processes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So, there is no RSD Administration, Administrative Director right now?
That's me, that's me. I'm the RSD Director.
Yeah.
And my salary is also split.
Okay.
Between two budgets, but it's not in this one.
Okay.
It's in the RSD Administrative 752. And we'll, we'll get into that because that, we had that previously and we did not have that in 20, in '21. The RS, the RSD Director was in Environmental Services 100%. So, in '22, we're going back to the split on that where we have it in the admin, in the general fund, RSD, and then 50% in Environmental Services. And that would be for Mike Hoffmeister. Just do a little reclass on those. So, do we have any, any questions on anything here? There's not a lot of differences. And again, we have all the narratives on here.
So, the person Mike would be working with hasn't been hired yet?
That's correct. It's being brought toward you to ask if we can go ahead and, you know, or propose this for '22. And would be brought to you later. I mean, we're not doing that now. I mean, you're not going to approve that now.
Right.
I mean, you're just be, doing the budget, but if you, for any reason, you decided not to, that's your prerogative as a board. It's just I wanted to put that in here in the budget and we just had to do that, you know, kind of ahead of time. So, we have it budgeted.
And, and just for clarity's sake, the Building Superintendent position is that 60,705 number that you see in previous years. So, the newly proposed position, their salary would be split between this salary and the RSD admin budget, which we will talk to later, talk about later. So, it's a, it's a budgeted position. It's just a new title.
That hasn't been filled.
Correct.
No jobs will be created or filled without coming back to the board with the job description and a salary.
Correct.
So, this is it. Budgets are fluid because we budget for things that sometimes don't happen and then we have to do budget amendments for things that are unexpected. But, this is a draft budget and Mike has put it in the proposed budget for 2022. But, no one will be hired. He'll work with HR, get a job description if that's okay with the board and bring it back and we voted.
Because it's, it, like you said, it's not really new funds because we had, previously, we had the building supervisor. So, it's just a different position and a title, different help allocating out the workload a little differently.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll go on to the next one. Turn my pages here. Okay, the next department is our Legal Services Department. That's on page 34. That's, that's quite extensive. I do have the, the narrative. It's not changed. Attorney Winters handles everything for us. We have, I mean, it's just all listed. Would you like me to read the narrative? Okay.
This hasn't changed.
It has not changed. He's just.
Mr. Winters, could you step to the podium?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, we've done lately, Mr. Winters.
So, it's the same, we're proposing the same as for 2021.
Yeah.
All right. So, the next department is our General Services Department. That's on page 35. This is the one I was saying that our postage is in, our publishing is in. It kind of hits all of our departments.
Can I ask one question?
Go ahead.
I think with the exception of, is that just because we don't do those things or how does, how do those things happen? Like, so with the exception of domestic violence?
Those are in a separate fund. Did I, it's prosecution? Did I miss that fund? So, those are in their own category, their own department. And that's for the domestic violence prosecution and.
287, due process.
Oh, I haven't got that one yet. That's a due process. So, it's in its own, own department. And those are for the attorneys that are handling everything over in the court.
When the nuisance abatements come before us, that's for just, there's separate funds for the actual prosecution going to court to do.
And the nuisance abatements are all in that community stabilization. That's where we have all of that, where we, we handle all of those.
Neighborhood stabilization.
Neighborhood stabilizations. That's that, that big fund that we have, the nine, I think it's.
Like the crematory and, you know.
The things that are listed.
Yeah, those are, and they're separate. So, the violence, the domestic violence, the prosecution, they're in a separate due process department. And the nuisance abatement is in the community stabilization.
Prosecution, domestic violence, used to be in 14B Court, but we took it out because.
They couldn't pay for it.
So, we took it out and put it back into the general fund several years ago. But, this is for like day-to-day, all the meetings that they go, yeah.
That's a good question because I did not explain that in here that it was in another department. So, those are in another department.
So, who prosecutes those going? So, the court's not handling that and then we, we don't have a role?
Yeah. They're the prosecutor. McClain and Winters are prosecutors.
For those?
For the court, in 14B Court, domestic violence and prosecution. We've always tracked domestic violence for years since we, they do, we do a report somewhere in the state. They keep track of domestic violence countywide and statewide.
And it also pays for the county-appointed attorneys?
The defend.
Defense, yes.
Defense attorneys.
Sorry. Okay, the next department is the General Services Department. That's Department 35. And as I said, this has the postage in there that we all use the postage. We allocate the postage out to the different funds. So, if Environmental Services uses the postage, they get charged back for the postage. So, this, this truly is only for the departments in the general fund. We do budget for all of it, but like I said, we do allocate the expenditures out to the different funds. If there's a different fund and they use the postage, we charge them for that. So, that'd be ordinance. That's, that's in law enforcement. So that'd be ordinance. That's, that's in the law enforcement fund and the environmental services, recreation, court. They pay us back.
So I guess I'm thinking that if this is charged, not charged, but expense to all the other departments, shouldn't revenue come to this department to balance it out?
It, it goes, it just, just goes back to this reclass. We just take the expense from here and put the expense over to the other. So we just do a reclass on it. There's no revenue. We just make sure that they get charged the expenditure.
Okay.
Because we pay the, we pay the postage, because the postage machine is here. And we pay for the postage. So we have one check to the postage machine. And then as you use it, you have to tell what department is using it. So we've already paid for it. And then what we do then is just charge back that postage to those funds.
Okay. Okay. I guess the way I was looking at it was like a, say a, a charge-back department that, yeah, your department paid for the postage, but you charge it out to other departments and then you charge those departments back what you paid.
So, so we pay the one check. So the, the check actually comes out, that's where the expense is. So we cut the check for the postage. We cut the $20,000 check, let's say. And then they use it. And then I in turn, say, each month, I say, the court used $700. And I say, you owe us $700. And I lower my expenditure by $700. And I put it over on their side and I transfer money back over to the general fund.
So the general fund gets the revenue?
Correct, because the general fund paid the initial check.
And, and that's, that, that's what I was trying to get to, you know?
So we get, we get, the funds get, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know if this was, you know, one of those funds. Okay, thanks.
And this is the one where we'll take, we'll reduce this a little bit and put some to the Elections Department for their postage because they were using this as well. So I'll make that adjustment on the, the final draft.
And because you listed like COVID supplies and equipment, this would be one of the ways that we could just, we could go back and look at the things that we've had to pay for because of COVID.
Correct.
We start to look at what's allowable because there are, we are allowed to be reimbursed for costs that we have. So the way, like we can go back and look through all these COVID, if there's things that were really.
Yeah, so we put them in there. And then again, we have a store. And Mike Serenin actually runs that little store for us and we tell them what we need. And then he charges back each of the departments. As, as, and the funds. Usually it's a funds that we're, you know, charging back those things for. Each department in the general fund, we don't necessarily charge because that's, this is the general fund. Like, it's like the pool place. Where all of our telephones are here. They do, so for telephones, I actually have that in that part of the admin fee that I charge to each one of the funds, that admin fee that the general fund gets. So I charge a portion of the phones back to those in that administration calculation. So we do get some funds back from the other funds for this department here. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Page 37 is our Human Resource Department. Not a lot of changes in this one. Any questions on that specifically? All the training comes from there. I know Karen Wallen is here to answer any questions, if you have any. But she does do all the training and education from there. You'll see that budget in there at 25,000. And so everybody has to check in with our HR department for their training. Does anybody have any questions for Karen Wallen?
Just a small one. And I know it was mentioned in a previous meeting, how many employees the township has. But I didn't remember. 106, thanks.
All right, the next department we have is on page 40 and that's Other Functions. This is the account where I actually had, the OPEB was before. So the OPEB was in here. Let me just go to the next page, okay. So the, the OPEB payments were out of here. You'll see that, excuse me.
878-003.
Thank you very much.
876, I'm sorry, 003.
Yes. So that amount was at 336,286. So now that's all split out between all of the departments and general fund. And actually, the golf course was in here as well because they did not have money previously to pay those things. But we since have allocated them to each of the departments and allocated it back out to the fund for golf courses as well. So that amount is gone. And also the workers' comp was paid out of here. That's by each employee. So I was able to allocate that back out to all the departments instead of paying it all in one lump sum from here. The other funds have already had the workers' comp in their fund. And the OPEB was in their fund that they paid out. So this just is for general fund. It was all in this other function before. And now we've got it split out to where it needs to be.
Giovanna, am, am I correct to say the state required us to do that?
Yes. Yeah, so they wanted us to allocate everything that we could out to the departments.
And every community will be the same? That's the, everyone had to change.
All the count numbers will all be the same, so you can match the oranges to the oranges and the apples to the apples. The largest amount you'll see here is the streetlights. That's non-assessing. So the streetlights that belong to the township or just in the township that we have to pay, you know, for DTE, the electric on it. It also includes the US 12 edition, the lights there. So that's why that went up quite a bit there.
Page 40?
Page 40.
So the streets that are on the primary road, I mean, the lights on the primary roads are non-accessible. But when neighborhoods petition for them, all new development, it's on.
They are special assessments then.
So, but we did do substantial lighting on US 12 for, and it's, I, it's going to be so nice and safe. And then Huron Street next year, getting off the exit and coming to Huron River Drive is, but that's next year. We're going to propose to do that as well, so. That's why it's increasing.
So is there any questions on that Other Functions Department? All right. Page 44 is a new department. This is for storm, actually, it's not a new department. I did put a new line item in there. So the next page, Lisa. Pardon me? Did I? Oh, sorry, I did. Did I miss it? Oh, I sure did. It's on page 43. I apologize. That's the court due process that we were talking about. And this is where the domestic violence prosecution and attorney fees for the defense. There's only the three line items for that. Any questions on that? Okay. Then we will move into the stormwater and drains at large. The professional services are for the $28,000. That's for the Huron River Watershed Council. They do some work that have to be done for the watershed. And also the drains at large, Washtenaw County Drains at Large. We did have that in Fund, not Fund, but Department 446. During this move of all of our accounts and making sure that we have them in the right spot, I did have to move the drains at large into the Stormwater and Drains at Large Department 445. So that's why you see the 400,000 here. And there's no information there. But our next fund, if you don't have any questions on that one, the next fund is the Highway and Streets Department 446. And that's where the Drains at Large was at. So I've moved it from the 446 to the 445.
So this is kind of a big deal. We, we don't often celebrate the things we accomplish, but we're really, we have a, I think it's a five-year master plan for improving the drainage in our community. So we always invest in roads, but we don't do as much investment in the drains, which, thank God, we did some already because of the flooding. And we did have some areas that had some issues. But overall, if we continue to improve the drainage, then it will help with the additional climate weather and the floods and everything.
Yeah, so you can see the history. Yeah, you can see the history on page 45. In 446, you can see how it went from 172,000 in 2019 to 317,000 in 21. Going up a little bit. All right, is there any questions? Okay, page 46 is our Planning Commission. It's pretty straightforward. There's no change there. Page 47 is the Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, there's no major changes there. If there's no questions, we'll go on. Page 48 is our Community Development Department. That used to be our planning, what we used to call our Planning Department. That was last year, if you ever look at the older stuff, it's, it was Department 371. This is Jason, Jason's department. And I believe he's here, if you have any questions for him. No questions?
All right. Well, we do hope to have the new positions.
Oh, yes.
I wanted to say to the Township Board of Trustees, thank you again for your continued support of Planning Department. I really appreciate, you know, the new positions that were approved by you folks. It's going to greatly expand the capability.
Of our Planning Department to allow for, you know, us to be able to get into new projects and be able to accommodate development in a timely fashion. Not that we're timely, not timely now, but we'll be able to, you know, accommodate developers, our residents and, and all those types of projects. And then continue to work on things that we really want to get involved in, in the coming year. So again, I appreciate your support and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the budget. The increases in the budget primarily reflect the increases in salary for the new positions. There's also some changes that were made in order to have the meeting minutes for our boards and commissions. The Planning Commission, the Zoning Board professionally done by an outside company as opposed to using staff availability throughout the day to do that. Also, we've reduced some of the, some of our line items, including our engineering line item. We've taken a little bit of money out of that to try to offset as we, we try to run a lean department and, you know, only rely on outside consulting as needed, so.
Jason, when will they, I mean, job offers have been extended, right, for the two?
Yeah, so that's a timely question, Supervisor. Karen Wallen just notified me this afternoon that those folks will look to start on October 25th, which is a Monday in just a couple of weeks, so we're excited. And we're already starting to make accommodations for those folks on the second floor. And we look forward to having them here.
What I didn't realize was when, even if a fence, which is very controversial, but when fences come in, they're reviewed by the Planning Department and decks before it goes to building. They, the planning touches literally almost everything that comes in for any kind of building to verify the zoning and inquiries that come in and they, there's a lot of them, I know, Jason. And I, the help is going to be great, not only for you, but also for the residents who are asking. You know, we can expedite it sooner if we have more people to do it other than you.
Yep, we'll, we'll be able to turn permits around on a lot more timely basis. And like I said, we, not that we don't, timeliness is a big consideration. But yeah, we'll, we'll have a lot more hands to spread things around and it'll be great. Looking forward to it.
Me too.
Thank you, folks.
Our next department is our, on page 51. That's the Economic Development Department. We did not do a budget for this department. If the board decides, we would have to bring this back and do budget amendments for it. So at this time, there is no budget for the economic development.
And the goal is with more planning staff, Jason, you know, can, because right now, his handling is they come in anyways and, you know, they contact us. But it will really make him to be in a position to better answer questions and spend time with prospective developers as well. So we didn't fill it in 20, we didn't fill it in 21, so I took it out.
Could we put more in the, like, in the narrative right there that just says the rationale as to what's going on? Because I could see somebody looking at the budget saying, what do you mean, you're not planning for economic development? But not budgeted for 2022 because of reorganization.
Okay, sure, we can do that.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Very good.
Very good. I'd rather have a marketing. At some point.
Just from the stuff that's come to us, that we are, like Jason is handling, a lot that comes here that's about economic development. I just wouldn't want somebody who's, you know, because this is all online, to think that's not something that's concerning to us. It is. We've just reorganized to better.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. We'll, we'll, we'll add that in.
It is a short narrative, you're right.
Yeah, it is. Sometimes I just, more focused on my numbers. We'll add that for you. Page 52 is our Community Stabilization. That is where we have all of our nuisance and we try to keep our community stable. For lack of a better word, that's what we, we use this one for. Does anyone have any questions on this account, in this department? Okay. We'll go to page 53. That is our Residential Services Admin Department. This is the one we were talking about early, where 50% of Michael Hoffmeister's salary will be in in 22 and 50% of the Assistant Director, the RSD Assistant Director that they're proposing. This is where those funds would be. So this is basically, all this in here is wages and fringes. There's nothing else.
Giovanna, what'd you say the reason was to split in, splitting it up like that? Where you have, have it in these two different funds?
Well, because he would be billed, so he would have responsibilities with the building. And I think Mike has a visual for what's going to be because we don't have, we're not going to do a building super. Oh, I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, so I can speak to my salary. I think the goal for my salary, I'm half Residential Services Admin and half Environmental. And that decision initially was made because the Environmental Fund is very much millage-driven. And so it was to alleviate that millage a little bit, I believe. So that's why my salary was split half and half. And then the Assistant Director position was the same reasoning. They'd be helping me with all Residential Services Departments, so splitting their salary between two kind of made sense.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So the next department? So the next department is our Resident, oops, excuse me, Residential Services Parks and Grounds. And again, Michael Hoffmeister is over that department, so if you have any specific questions for him there. I do want to say something on this one. As I was looking over my notes, I did notice an error that I had made in '21. I did not budget for a whole position. And that's why you'll see the wages, the wage line. There is no supervisor in this line, so there's no expense for a supervisor in this one. So the next line is the regular wages. And in '21, it was budgeted for $130,707. That was an error on my part. That should have included another $48,000 for a position. We had moved one of our internal positions from the Building Department in 101-265 to here into our Grounds and Park. And I did, I missed moving that in there. So I do apologize. That's why you'll see the big difference from $130,000 to $183,000. I just kind of wanted to point that out. But other than that, I think we're pretty much the same on all the other line items. Is there any specific questions that you would have for Mike Hoffmeister?
Yeah, I do. I think Mike, at one time, Brenda said we didn't have enough people who do the lawn service and maintenance. Does your budget include maybe one day hiring those people, even if they're part-time for the summer?
Sure. So the budget that you see proposed today shows four full-time employees, and then approximately $180,000 for seasonal employees, which come between March 15th and November 15th. And so the last two years have been difficult with seasonal employees, just because we've had a lack of applicants and just a low turnout for applications. So in the narrative for the permanent wages, you'll see a sub-note there that states, I would love to hire two part-time or one full-time laborer position for this department. The part-timers could be year-round part-timers that would assist the Parks and Ground staff, or one additional full-time laborer that could help our full-time staff increase for the 900 acres of parkland we maintain. And then the goal with that would also help alleviate our current laborer from working every single weekend. So right now, we have one laborer that works between the months of April and October, Tuesday through Saturday, to help with shelter rentals and trash on weekends. And if we were able to get another laborer, that would help alleviate her working every weekend or alter months or what have you, so.
Thank you. Sunday is a big issue with trash in our parks, too. We have to figure out how, because the good news is people are using the parks. We only have someone working on Saturday with no, we have rangers that help us tremendously, thanks to Robin. So if people have an event on, if people go to the park and have a party or a barbecue or something on Saturday after it's already been cleaned Saturday during the day, then oftentimes, a park ranger has been trying to get it picked up. And it's an issue, and our residents have pointed it out to us. So we have to figure out how to do that, you know? Because right now, we really don't have Sunday employees at all. So we need to talk that through.
And I do have to say that he does, Mike does have the question here that he would like to hire the two part-time or one full-time. We do not have that budgeted, so that would have to be something that would be brought back, and then a budget amendment would have to be made, unless we finally accept before the, before November, the end of November. But that would be brought back before the board for more decisions.
But it also might make it more appealing if it was a position that somebody knew they'd have year-round versus seasonal. And with the climate changing, I mean, it's warmer longer than it had been before.
So we'll bring it back for discussion. All right. So the next department. It's on page 60. It's our Capital Outlay Department. Did I miss a department? Okay. Capital Outlay Department. We only have $10,000 budgeted there. That doesn't mean that we don't have capital projects that need to be done. Those all get brought back before the board. You know, like I said, we usually would designate 30% of the fund balance for those projects, the capital outlay projects that we have listed. And we brought, we'll bring those back toward the board for decisions. So any questions on that? Oh, the final department, that is, that is the other financing. And that's where the general fund would have to help out other funds. So, and those, there's three. There's three that make the biggest, the largest appropriations for the whole budget for the, for the general fund, is this department. But, you know, I did go over the bond debt, and I did explain that for the LDFA fund, we're not collecting as much on that. And the general fund will have to help pay for the bond principal and interest. And that was at $159,468. And then the general fund gives the BSR II Fund half of the road bond and principal. This is the last year of that, as Supervisor Stumbo had said. So that'll, you know, be kept back in the general fund for '23. And then the transfer of $749,533 to the court, just to cover the shortfalls for operation for '22. So those are, those are our big ones. And we do have to balance, we have to balance the budgets. We can't go into a negative, so that's why they have to, that's why we would have to give them those funds. Any questions? That concludes the general fund presentation.
Question about the, where would money come from, or where is it budgeted for the improvements that we were looking into for safety as far as the court goes? Like, where would that show up in here, where we place that?
That we did have, I believe, in law enforcement, we had some there for the positions. But for the whole project, we have not got that budgeted anywhere as of yet. That would be something that would have to be brought back before the board and discussed whether we were going to do that in the general fund.
I think you had a walkthrough with them, right?
For the, just for the RFP part, we, Mike held a, and Stan was there, a walkthrough before they placed bids. And we're actually in the process of, we're going to interview them next week on next Tuesday. So we narrowed it down to three, you know, architectural firms. And whatever we conclude there, we'll bring back to the next board meeting and just keep everyone updated.
And a budget amendment will have to be made at that point, because there is no funds budgeted for the professional services for that engineering firm.
Motion to adjourn. Was that clear?
Okay, second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I loved your PowerPoint.
Can I just ask a question of the board? With the finances of our federal government, Nancy Pelosi has put into this budget amendment $200,000, excuse me, $200 million for some park in California. Is there some way that that can be blocked? Is there, and also to prevent something in our budget, and I know the board has been very good at keeping our dollars on track. Is there some kind of recourse of the population who pays the taxes for that kind of stuff for Pelosi to not put frivolous things into these bills, especially when we have such a big debt?
No. I mean, we can't, you can contact Debbie Dingell and Debbie Stebbinall and our congressional representatives, but...
I mean, I know here I can come, because it's a small community. And if there was something that looked funny and we were in debt, I could say something. But, you know, I'm like a drop in the ocean. But I just wondered where to go. But Debbie Dingell, then?
Yeah, it would be, you know, your Congress and Senate representatives, and just call them if you want, and tell them that you disagree with what is being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
That's the best way. Thanks, Ms. Kaiser. All right, the meeting's adjourned at 6:10.